Okay, thank you. Welcome to City of Canyon City Planning Commission Meeting Wednesday, September 23rd, 2019. I now call this meeting to order. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty addressed as it is.
Hey, I did erase this, but I can.
No, I kicked this.
I know. Thank you. Hi Denise, will you please call Rolle?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
Commissioner Moss?
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
Council Representative Brandon Smith?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes from the September 23rd regular meeting. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
All second.
Okay, were there any corrections, additions, or comments? Denise, please call Rolle.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Yes.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. Thank you. Item 4A. I guess I should go over some housekeeping items. If you are on the Zoom meeting and you wish to speak, you should have a button that will notify us that you are going to speak. If you're on the phone call right now, if you dial *9, it'll notify us that you would like to speak. Is that correct, Patrick?
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you. So *9 if you're on the phone call. Item 4A, rezoning from PDD, Plan Development District, Four Mile Ranch, to R2 Medium Density Residential Hoover Property at 703 Four Mile Lane, case numbers 2020-004A and B. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we please have a staff report?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This evening, we are here to consider the request by the owner of the property to rezone 703 Four Mile Lane from PDD Plan Development District for Four Mile Ranch to R2 Medium Density Residential. This is a public hearing and has been noticed as such. The subject property is located on the west side of Four Mile Lane in the eastern part of Canyon City. It is a 76-acre parcel heavily impacted by both 100-year floodplain and floodway associated with the Four Mile Creek. These flood zones seriously restrict where on the property future development can occur. Currently, the property is vacant and undeveloped, and any access to the developable portions of the site would have to come from Four Mile Lane. In terms of existing zoning, the subject property is currently within the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development District, or PDD. Within the Four Mile Ranch PDD, the property contains two single-family residential land use areas. Together, these areas would allow for 110 single-family homes on 31.2 acres. The approved zoning also preserves the floodplain and floodway areas within an open space designation, within which no more than six single-family residences could be constructed, and these areas would have to be situated outside areas impacted by floodplain or floodway designations. Now, in terms of the context of the existing zoning, the subject property is the only portion of Four Mile Ranch situated west of Four Mile Lane. If someone wanted to separate a parcel from Four Mile Ranch, Four Mile Lane would be a logical separation point. The portion of Four Mile Ranch east of Four Mile Lane also contained single-family residential in the same density as that permitted on the subject property. This area is highlighted on the map in front of you in orange. It should be noted that the property to the south is the only other parcel with which the subject property touches, which is currently within the city limits. It is owned RL Rural Living Residential, which is how it has been built. Properties to the west are also low-density residential situated in unincorporated Fremont County. Finally, the property to the north is agricultural in character and also located in unincorporated Fremont County. The applicant seeks to remove this property from the obligations within the Four Mile Ranch PDD. This is Part 1 of the rezoning request. The reasons for this include wanting to have the flexibility to develop duplex units and wanting to disassociate this property with the broader Plan Development District and its incurred debt for utility installations. Under Part 2 of the rezoning request, the applicant seeks to change the existing zoning to R2 Medium Density Residential. Although the applicant intends to build a house for his family in the short term, in the longer term, the applicant seeks the ability to locate a community of duplex units on-site outside the areas impacted by floodplain and floodway. There are approximately 36.93 acres on the subject property outside the floodplain and floodway, which could be developed for residential use. Note that any such development on the property would require approval of a subdivision, which would address access for the individual lots being planted, grading, drainage, and extension of utilities into the site. Now, this does leave a small developable portion west of Four Mile Creek. The applicant has indicated he has no desire to build on that parcel. Now, in terms of the evaluation of the zoning request itself, as defined in Section 17.40, there are three criteria against which rezoning requests must be evaluated. Staff's evaluation of this request found that both Criteria 1, the land to be rezoned was zoned in error and as presently zoned is inconsistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan, and 2, the area for which the rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage redevelopment apply. The Four Mile Ranch PDD was established nearly 20 years ago. In that time, only two internal land use areas have been developed, and the cost of infrastructure to serve these developments is still being paid by residents within Four Mile Ranch. The applicant in this rezoning wants to have greater flexibility in the type of residential that can be built on his property than that which the Four Mile Ranch PDD would allow for his property, and wants to disconnect the property from having to share in the financial obligations for servicing the debt already incurred for infrastructure installation. It should also be noted that, as a matter of policy, the UAA COG, Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments, conducted a study last year on residential housing needs assessment for Canyon City and Fremont County. That study determined that there is a shortage of quality attainable housing in the region that the applicant's proposal could potentially resolve. This would be attainable housing that could be for people who are in professions like nursing, teachers, firemen, policemen. At the moment, the dearth of available housing in this area is so significant that it's affecting the ability to recruit people to fill these vacancies because they would probably have to live in and commute from either Colorado Springs or Pueblo, and not many people want to do that. Staff therefore recommends that following a public hearing on this request, staff is recommending that Planning Commission cite the three findings of fact as contained in the staff report as evidence that this has been properly noticed for hearing and Planning Commission has jurisdiction to conduct this public hearing. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the rezoning request for 703 Four Mile Lane to remove it from the Four Mile Ranch PDD and rezone the subject property to R2 Medium Density Residential. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. Also present to speak on behalf of this property is the owner, Nelson Hoover, and his consultant, Matt Koch.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. We'll start with questions from the Commission for Staff. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Ladue?
I do. What was the zoning before the 2004 PDD?
I believe it was in unincorporated Fremont County at that time. It did not have a Canyon City zoning on it before it be annexed.
Any idea what the county zoning?
I do not know what the county zoning was.
And then, can you refresh, is there any relation with the current development near the golf course and the obligations of that development to the city, particularly with relation to Four Mile Parkway?
With respect to Four Mile Parkway, no. Four Mile Parkway would eventually be extended within the development and would eventually intersect Four Mile Lane at some point in the future when development extended in that direction. I don't have any ability to guess when that might happen at this point in time, but moving this property out of the Four Mile Ranch PDD would not change that future intersection alignment.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I was curious about the utilities that you were saying that by rezoning this at a limit, these guys from potentially, can you just explain more about that and what that looks like?
So, when the two areas within Four Mile Ranch developed, this would be the MF4 area along Cowboy Way and the SFR1A area along Telegraph Trail and some of the roads that go off of Telegraph Trail, there was a significant water line that had to be installed under County Road 123. If you drive down that road, you'll notice that there is in fact a pump house about halfway between Four Mile Lane and Four Mile Parkway that helps to facilitate. And it forestalled having to build a water tank further into the property as well. That was an expensive inclusion, being able to extend that water line. They also had to extend sanitary sewer to get out there as well. Those were significant debt obligations that are being paid off by Metro Districts. The Metro District was the entity that incurred that debt and has in fact got mills associated with the debt service on each of the developed lots within Four Mile Ranch. The applicant clearly, I mean, they don't derive a whole lot of benefit associated with that utility installation because they're in a different location, and therefore, they would rather not have to share in that debt obligation.
So, when they determine what percentage or portion each of those homeowners had to pay, did they include the potential of the housing that would be developed in this area?
I don't believe the Metro District that was going to service this area had been formed at that time.
Okay. So, we wouldn't be adding extra expense or cost to the current owners of that area?
No. The homeowners who buy into this area of Four Mile Ranch know when they go in, this is what their debt service, their mill levy is for repayment of these bonds that were purchased to finance the infrastructure. And as future filings that are also serviced by that infrastructure installation come in, they will also have that debt service obligation. To the extent that, you know, future improvements, future infrastructure had to be added up Four Mile Lane or into the site via the extension of Four Mile Parkway through the property, that would potentially become this property owner's obligation.
Thank you, Patrick.
Just so we're clear, this is potentially a down zone?
Well, not exactly, not if you run the numbers. The 110 dwelling units that are there under the Four Mile Ranch PDD would be, you know, 104 single-family units in the same, you know, size lots that you have out in Four Mile Ranch currently. Under the R2 zoning, the applicant would have the ability to develop the portions of the site that are outside of, see the blue and yellow shaded areas on the map, what they have on-site is about 39 acres that could potentially be developed residentially. And one of the options that they have under the R2 zone would be duplex units. The duplex unit has a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. You would potentially have more than 200 dwelling units that could be built out there. From that number, you have to subtract what it would take to run roads through there to provide access for the various lots, how you would grade it and provide the various drainage and stormwater runoff infrastructure, how you would handle infrastructure for dry utilities through there. All of that would begin to shrink the number of available units, but it would still, if you fully developed it out, be potentially 200 dwelling units.
And just because of history, has fire been notified of any of this?
If you look through the agenda packet, you will see that fire was sent a referral request on this, and they did not have any comment.
Thank you.
I guess.
Commissioner Ladue, go ahead.
I guess to follow up on the floodway and floodplain, I mean, if the entire parcel is rezoned R2, I mean, the reality is floodplain and floodways can and do change often. So, I mean, that does expand. If the whole thing is R2, we can certainly get additional units in there.
Within the floodplain, potentially, yes. Within the floodway, I don't think you want to affect how Four Mile Creek actually runs. Besides which, that is, these open spaces, these natural areas tend to be wonderful opportunities for wildlife migration areas. So, we would want to discourage the applicant from actually building into those areas.
But as currently proposed, it is all R2. There is no open space portion of the parcel, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And then, I guess, real quick, back to the Metro District, is the parcel within the Metro District boundary currently?
It is not, it was within a Metro District that was never actually formally established and never incurred any debt.
So, the debt that has been incurred does not actually impact the parcel?
Correct. And they want to make sure that it doesn't.
But changing those boundaries, I assume, is a fiasco in itself.
Well, I understand the applicant has been working with the people who have formed the Metro District out there to make sure that they were excluded from the Metro District as well. That is a civil matter that doesn't involve the city.
Commissioner Smith?
When you talk about Metro District, is that something similar to an HOA? Does Four Mile have an HOA association?
Metro Districts are not HOAs. I mean, they can sometimes be set up to have functions that HOAs occasionally have. In some cases, a Metro District could have functions to, for instance, plow streets in snow conditions, or they can maintain common, you know, park-owned areas. In this case, I think primarily it was set up simply to incur the debt and then service the debt based upon, you know, when you annually pay your property taxes, a portion of that for each homeowner goes to their portion of the debt servicing.
And would it be up to the developer to create another Metro District or an HOA within the proposed property?
If he wanted to do that within his proposed property, yes. That would be up to him.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, I guess a few more. So, Four Mile Lane, it appears to be paved to the southern side of the parcel. Is that, and then dirt, the remainder of the way?
Yeah, that is correct. It is paved right up to about the point where you can enter the property at the southerlymost point, and shortly beyond that, it does go dirt as it goes north.
And so, potential future paving and curb and gutter, that would be addressed during subdivision?
If a subdivision came forward that proposed to access Four Mile Lane at, you know, points northerly of this, I believe the city would require that the road be paved and curb gutter and sidewalk be installed.
But if this parcel itself has, you know, duplex development, that would access Four Mile Lane at the dirt portion, I mean, at that point, there's potential for pave and curb and gutter?
Yes, we would have to take a look at the traffic impact, but yes.
Okay. And then, those traffic impacts, presumably now, this would be serviced strictly by Four Mile Lane. Under the PDD, it appears that eastbound traffic, you know, Denver or Pueblo or Springs bound would have used Four Mile Parkway. So, I mean, this is going to put additional traffic into the US 50, County Road 123, Four Mile Lane intersection, which is not ideal?
Well, if this property were to remain within the Four Mile Ranch PDD, if it developed as it's currently configured with the 110 single-family lots, that would probably not trigger the connection of Four Mile Parkway all the way over to County Road 123. So, similarly, the development of this property for, you know, duplex units under R2 would also not trigger the connection of Four Mile Parkway all the way over to this intersection. Future development within Four Mile Ranch as it moves west would ultimately dictate when that connection occurs. But yes, until such time as that connection got built, the traffic would probably have, would have no other choice than to go southerly on Four Mile Lane to intersect Highway 50.
And would any improvements to that intersection be addressed during the subdivision process?
To the extent that the city engineer and CDOT felt that such improvements to that intersection were warranted, yes.
Any other questions? So, before we ask the applicant to come up, maybe we should see if there's any comments from the audience. I can't see that far.
You've got phone number 719-888, is it 8825?
No, the last four, 8885.
Okay, caller 8885. You have three minutes. Are you there?
Alright, this is Stacy Seifert.
Hi Stacy.
And I am, I'm probably, oh, about a half a mile up Four Mile Lane from the subject property. The first thing that I would like to go over and clarify for you guys is that there are four different Metro Districts in Four Mile Ranch. One and two are currently subject to the additional mill levy which pays back the infrastructure fees to the city. Districts three and four currently assess a 15-mill levy against the undeveloped property in Four Mile Ranch, and this piece of property is in one of those Metro Districts. As it was explained to me about a week ago from the Metro District Attorney, this district could incur debt for additional infrastructure at some point in the future, and the way they wrote the bylaws and the Metro Districts, they do not have to ask for a vote to impose an additional mill levy for additional infrastructure. So, that's first of all, what you're removing this property from, and I'm not sure the Metro District's going to want to let them go. Secondly, my question to Mr. Mulready would be, is any portion of that 58 acres of open space, is that counted towards any of the open space requirements for the development on the east side of Four Mile Lane? Because I believe originally, they used that floodplain as open space for the entire Four Mile Ranch because they couldn't use it to develop. So, that's a question that I have for your planner.
So, Stacy's question sounds like was the whole Four Mile Ranch development was using that open space for the whole development? Now that it's being subdivided off, does that cause an issue for the open space on the other side?
I would have to go back and calculate. I believe that there was a percentage requirement for open space, and I don't know if removing this property and its associated open space somehow takes the balance of Four Mile Ranch below the threshold of percentage of open space dedications. Clearly, it would, yes, they would be removing the open space that's on this property from the balance of the open space within Four Mile Ranch.
Okay. Stacy, we'll address your questions when I bring the applicant up potentially, so stay on the call, please.
We have a hand up from a Ruth McCulloch.
Hi Ruth. *9?
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As I understood, the westerlymost part of the property abutting the county land will not be developed. That's not in their plans. Is that correct?
That is what has been conveyed to us.
And would there be any assurance of that?
Can you put my PowerPoint back up? Okay, there has been no assurance granted about that. However, this is a close-up of that area. You can see the contours there. This is a topographical map, and what you're seeing is how steep that property is. That area shaded in red right there is about 1.3 acres. It is about the only portion of that that could actually be developed, and because it would only have access off of the bend where Elizabeth Street becomes Creekview Court, the best you're probably going to be able to do at most on that property is two homes with a sheer driveway.
But there's no assurance of that, so, okay.
The applicant can speak more to that, but that would be the practical reality.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
And to be clear, those two structures could be duplexes under R2?
Under R2, yes.
Okay, so, no one else is up to talk?
Chairman Maloney? Sorry, this is Catherine Sellers, the city attorney.
Hi Catherine.
Hi. I just want to clarify something. There seems to be a little bit confusion. This has nothing to do with the exclusion from the Metro District tonight. As Patrick mentioned previously, that's a process. The Metro District is an independent governmental entity, and it will decide whether or not the property is excluded, whether it wants to agree to that or not. And so, the city doesn't have a role in that. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. I think Patrick touched on that, that that's between the applicant and the Metro District.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Alright. Mr. Hoover, Mr. Cook, do either of you want to come up and shed some light and answer some questions, maybe?
Good evening. I'd be happy to answer. Is there a mic Denise?
Yeah, the light isn't on.
Okay. Probably better at answering questions than giving just a straight-out presentation, but I would probably clarify, one of the main objectives, it's kind of a two-part objective for the property, and one is for a personal dwelling for our family. So, the concerns of high density will also be shared by us if we live there. So, the R2 is more of a provision for possibility in the future, and I'd be interested in knowing, the comprehensive plan was mentioned, and I was not able to be part of, for the city of how that was laid out. I'd be curious to know, for the remainder of the parcel, the developable area, what would serve the city the best? We're interested, I'm a contractor, we're interested in doing possibly some development, but in our preliminary numbers that we've ran, the numbers really don't pencil out to do a high-density R2 duplex development. I think from what I'm gathering, just in the conversation, what would be permitted on the property, there would have to be, we'd have to tap into the city sewer system. That's very expensive to bring it from the intersection of, is it 123, all the way out along the length of this property.
I don't want to stop you, but can you turn your mic on?
Light is, there we go. It says this mic is on. The light is broke. I don't know if they're, is it coming through?
That's, yeah, that's better.
He's saying get closer to the mic.
I can do that.
Awesome.
Can you hear better? Okay, I'm sorry. I must have a speaker right above my head, so it's quite loud for myself.
We just want to make sure that everybody can hear.
Yes, absolutely. So, I'll just go back over and review just a bit what I said. The type of R2 duplex development that I sense maybe is kind of the fear of some of the people that are concerned about that, from the numbers that we've ran really doesn't pencil out. That's just the long and the short of it. Unless the city sewer is ran from the intersection of 123 and Four Mile all the way out to the north end of the property, and the cost of that is not permissive for lots. So, the development that we would do that is kind of in the preliminary planning, what we would like to do as a possibility, this is not even, there's nothing said and sewn. There's no plan that's being developed right now, but it would have to be on one-acre parcels to use septic systems on. That greatly limits the amount of residences that could be on the property. It would all... be on the property. It would, it would all have to run along access to Four Mile Lane. So you're not talking about streets and roads back in, on the property like it originally was developed, like the design was for the development. So we're not looking at that. The only way that that would even be a consideration is if on the east side of Four Mile, if that, if that whole unit would become developed and the city sewer was ran out there, so there'd be a shared cost for that. Outside of that, if that, if that remains open land, it's, it's just not cost-effective to run city sewer out there. It's not, it's not going to happen. But we can do one-acre lots. So, if, and if you calculate that along Four Mile Lane, to get a reasonable lot that stays out of the floodplain, you're looking at probably 10 lots, max. And that's not even guaranteed. This is, you know, again, I'd be interested in hearing from the city, from the comprehensive plan, what, I mean, I know, it's obviously an ideal location for maybe a senior development, something like that, with Walmart right around the corner. That would be a possibility. You know, we've dreamed about making walkways along the creek back there and some community areas, some pavilions, things like that, for some type of a senior, senior, maybe it's a snowbird area, maybe it's just a senior development area with, with smaller duplex units. That's a possibility. But I can tell you from our numbers, at least while, while I own the property, there's not going to be a high-density development because it's just not cost-effective. Someone else might be able to do it, but I, I can't figure it out, so.
There was also a concern about the, the open spaces at the red area on the map, that it wouldn't be developed, it would be...
I disagree with that. I don't think there's any flat area on top of that hill there. I'll just be honest, when, I mean, Patrick probably knows more about it than I do. I am not aware of a flat area that could be developed on top of the hill beside, is it Creekside Court or something like that? Creekview Court?
Elizabeth Street right there curves and becomes Creekview Court.
Creekview Court, yeah. I'm actually not aware of that, and there's no plans to develop anything up top there at this point.
Okay.
I'll probably go walk it tomorrow to see if it's actually, if it's actually there. But I'm not aware of that. There's no plans at all at this point to do any development there.
Okay. You did mention, because you're building this home for your own family, that you shared a concern?
Yes.
In the beginning?
We do. If my wife would have her way, there would never be a house on the property other than ours. I don't know if that's going to hold out or not. In light of where it's positioned and the usability for the city, that's why I'd be interested in knowing, you know, if, housing is a need in Canyon City and Fremont County, just simply is. Affordable housing especially. This lot could be developed. It obviously was laid out, planned for that. So, so some of that is a possibility. And the reason it's R2 zoning is, and I'll just be honest, it took us a year and a half to get to this point. So I would like to see the R2 zoning in place for the possibility of several, the possibility of several duplexes along Four Mile Lane in the future. As of right now, we don't have a plan in place for that.
So to address the question about the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan was last updated in 2001. This area was not a part of the city at that time. However, I believe the plan was recommending this area as residential. The comprehensive plan does not specify densities under residential, it just qualifies something as residential in character.
The current approach of one-acre lots, that could be achieved under a rural, rural zoning district, or at least R1? Is that accurate?
It could be under R1 or RL. However, R1 and RL do not allow duplexes.
Right, right.
And that was the applicant's request to be able to have the flexibility to do that.
Right.
That drove the R2.
That speculative nature is future, and it sounds like the sewer's problematic to that.
Mm-hmm.
And then a, a commercial facility, old folk home type thing, I mean, that, that would be yet another zoning, correct? I mean, is that, is that an allowed use under R2?
Not under R2. It would probably be more, depending upon the density and the number of people staying there, would probably be more of an R3 type use.
So that, that approach would be yet another zone change?
That would be another zone change, yes.
When I say senior living, I'm not, it would not be assisted living in any way. It would be individualized, more single-family or duplex.
Okay, so not, not a commercial situation, but a...
No, it would not be. It's just typically seniors are sometimes more comfortable when, when you're living close to someone else.
Right.
It would be in that, you know, when it becomes assisted living or anything commercialized, it would, it would not be able to happen on that property, at least under R2.
Okay.
That was part of the original plan for Four Mile, was to have that senior-type living as well, so, if I recall.
And it does. The Four Mile Plan involves sort of a community center around where the future golf club was, the golf pro shop and whatnot are going to be built. That's along the extension of Four Mile Parkway. There's a village center in there, and part of that village center concept included some assisted and in-care senior living.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant from the commission? Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoover.
I'd just make a note. I was, your staff is excellent. Patrick's report was actually informative for me. He did an excellent job, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Everyone's quiet now, so everyone's crystal clear?
Okay.
Well, I guess this time I'll close this public hearing. I'll ask, so, closing the public hearing, ask for a motion and a second based on the findings of fact. From the commission, please.
Let's see here. I can do that. Let me make sure I got the right one here. Alright. Findings of fact. I move the planning commission adopt the three findings of fact as stated in the staff's report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Clark, any further discussion? Denise, please call Raul.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
No.
Is that everyone? Okay. I now ask for a, the recommend, a motion and a second for recommendation to city council to approve the rezoning request for the property at 703 Four Mile Lane.
I can do that as well.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Might as well stay with the tradition.
Any further discussion?
Can, can you read your motion into the record, please?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read it out. I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council for the city of Canyon City approve rezoning requests for the property at 703 Four Mile Lane from PDD Plan Development District, Four Mile Ranch, to R2 High Density Residential.
That should actually say Medium Density Residential, I'm sorry.
So can we correct that motion to say Medium Density?
Yes, 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 to R2 Medium Density Residential.
Thank you. Does the second still stand?
I will resubmit my second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Denise, please call Raul.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
No.
Okay. Looks like motion's passed. We'll go on to city council. Thank you guys for coming tonight. Alright, have a great night. Item 5A, discussions on meeting dates for November and December 2020, board and commission.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, the regular meeting that would have occurred, or that is scheduled to occur in November, would be the day before Thanksgiving. So, at this point, I have nothing in the pipeline that would be going to public hearing from a land use application standpoint. So unless we get some sort of an emergency ordinance that we need to bring to public hearing before planning commission, I'm not anticipating that there will be a November meeting at this time. However, I was going to suggest that if we did have to do one the evening of Thursday, the 19th, this room is available if we needed to, and I wanted to know, was that a date that would be good with your schedules if we had to do that? Okay? Your December, your regular December meeting would actually be the day before Christmas Eve. I'm guessing you probably wouldn't want to be here that evening. So, again, Thursday the 17th would, well, no, actually, we would have to do it on Wednesday the 16th, because Thursday the 17th, that's the next item on your discussion points. But if we, if we have something going, we will know about this. The deadline to get applications submitted to go to a December planning commission hearing would be November 6th, Friday, November 6th. So if we get something in by that point, and we did have a pre-application with someone that would be doing an annexation, zoning, and minor subdivision, he was not sure that he was going to be able to get that in before the 6th of November, so it may be something that he submits by December 4th to go to a January planning commission. I'll let you know. But any event, December 16th, would that be a date that would be amenable to everyone? Okay, so I will, I will make a note of that. Thank you.
And you'll, you'll remind us all, right?
I, to the extent that we have to have a planning commission meeting in either November or December, I will make sure you all know that. The other item for discussion is the annual board and commission recognition dinner. That is scheduled for Thursday, December 17th. That will be at the Abbey. Our city clerk is putting together all of the details on that. I do not have a start time yet, but as soon as I find that out, I will communicate that all to you via email.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else tonight?
No, sir.
Alright, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.